Alright, good afternoon, everybody. Just gonna give a few moments for people to get in. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to today's Mid-Atlantic Planning Collaboration webinar. We are thrilled to have you today for this presentation. I would like to share a couple of announcements and general reminders before we get started. Don't forget to register for next month's Mid-Atlantic Planning Collaboration webinar, which will be presented on January 20th, 2022, at 12:00 PM. All information about upcoming webinars can be found online at virginia-planning.org, as well as links to registration. All recorded webinars can be found on the Mid-Atlantic Planning Collaboration YouTube site, which is also linked on that website. This webinar is being recorded. We encourage you to submit questions throughout the presentation in the Q&amp;A box at the bottom of your screen. When we move to the Q&amp;A portion of the presentation, we will take your questions in the order that they were submitted. If you would like to ask a question live to our presenters during that Q&amp;A session, please use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of your screen, and I will let you unmute yourself to speak directly with our presenters. With that, I will now introduce our session and our two presenters. Today's webinar is Organizing and Managing Planning Boards: Insights for Citizen and Professional Planners. This session will explore the vital partnership between professional and citizen planners, planning commissioners, Board of Zoning Appeals members, stakeholders, and the public planning sphere. After attending this session, participants will be able to: 1. Better organize and facilitate the mutual roles and responsibilities of planning staff and board members; 2. Develop effective educational resources and support systems for planning board members; and 3. Design and manage efficient and equitable public meetings. This session will cover foundational requirements, such as organizational roles and procedures, while also modeling the intricacies of a well-run public hearing. The expert panel today consists of Roxanne Hemphill, Mount Airy, Maryland Planning Commission Chair; Dani Winborn, Gaithersburg, Maryland Planning Commissioner; Michael King, AICP Regional Community Plans and Liaison Officer, U.S. Navy Region Mid-Atlantic; and Joe Griffiths, AICP Local Assistance and Training Manager, Maryland Department of Planning. With that, I will now process on to our presenters. Joe, could you unmute yourself, please?
Of course, I did that the very first time. So my name is Joe Griffiths, the Local Assistance and Training Manager for Maryland Department of Planning. I work closely with communities throughout Maryland, but also with the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. And you'll hear two of the board members of that organization speak today. Taylor did an excellent job going over the objectives, the learning objectives in today's meeting, but they are repeated here on the screen. And as a reminder, this is available for 1.5 AICPCM credits. Okay, so the MPCA, the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association, calls it "The Vital Partnership Between Professional and Citizen Planners." And this actually was the theme of our 2018 conference. So how do you build this vital partnership? So it starts with getting to know each other. We all know that you will be spending a lot of time together, a lot of late evenings. Now, you don't need to be friends, but you should get a general sense of each other's background, their likes and dislikes, areas of interest. Perhaps have lunch together. You know, during this lunch or more formal meeting, perhaps discuss the community in general, your aspirations for the community, your perceptions, your goals. We should not focus on specific projects. Those should be, you know, saved for more formal meetings. Comes to training and under, you should mutually train each other, have understanding and respect. It's important for staff to know that many, if not most, planning commissioners do not have a planning background. As a staff member, you should respect that your commissioners are volunteering their time. They also have their own full-time jobs, and they have full-time jobs that you don't show up in the evening and that they have to talk about, right? They're doing that with your job. And they may need concepts explained that you take for granted. Just because, and also just because they show up to a meeting, one meeting unprepared does not mean they don't care. Perhaps they had a very busy week at work, something going on with their family, and they just weren't able to prepare as much as they would like to. Keep your language straightforward and simple. Don't use jargon, but do use a lot of images. And don't be afraid to promote new ideas. For planning commissioners, you should ask questions early and often. Do your homework and think independently. Don't be afraid to promote new ideas, but focus on the item at hand. Also, you shouldn't recommend a work session or request a report during a public hearing. That really puts the staff, you know, in a difficult situation. You should really discuss it with the chair and the staff first, because you don't know their workload. That being said, while you shouldn't request work sessions during a public hearing, they can be very, they can be excellent opportunities to get to know each other more, come to a common understanding on difficult topics, and hash out some differences. And it's very important, and Dani's gonna be the first one to talk about this, as a jurisdiction, as an organization, to develop and maintain a system for productivity and success that everybody understands and follows and monitors, but also not to be afraid to reevaluate. Today's topic areas, we're gonna talk first about jurisdictional organization. That's gonna be Dani. Then we're gonna move on to Effective Planning Commissioners, Roxanne. And then Michael's going to talk about how to run a meeting for both before, during, and after. And then at the end, we're gonna run through an example meeting item as a group to model how you could run a meeting. So we'll start off with Dani. So, welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us. I'm very excited to be here with you. And Joe, you're gonna advance the slides, right? Okay, alright, great. So I'm gonna talk about jurisdictional organizations and give you some tips and tricks. And I'm just gonna keep it high level, but if there are any questions, by all means, stop me. Or you can, if you wanna wait to the end, we can, we can do that. So, next slide, please. Great, so I'm gonna talk about these items, rules, and procedures, a high-level presentation of that. Interaction and partnerships with staff, planning commissioners, or Boards of Appeals members, and the public. And specifically with those items, communication and education. And then I'm gonna get a, give a brief overview on legal components and requirements, and then wrap up with talking about agenda and scheduling, and how important that is. Next slide. Alrighty, see, this is the back of my head there. See me there? Procedures. All planning commission and Boards of Zoning Appeals individuals must establish rules for procedures to govern their proceedings. It's important that we have rules and guidelines to follow. Otherwise, we'd be, you know, all over the place. So it's important that your jurisdiction had that. If you're not aware of those, seek out your planning director or planning staff and get a copy of it. If you don't have one, the Maryland Planning Commission, excuse me, Maryland Department of Planning has guidelines. Your particular jurisdiction, organization, governing bodies also probably have guidelines that you can help, that help you to establish those items. And any governing body that presides over a complex development and land use topics must have rules, and that's why we want you to make sure that you have those established. Okay? Planning commissioners and Boards of Zoning Appeal Members must be familiar with these rules and refer to them frequently. I've been a planning commissioner for almost 20 years, and I often go back and look at our rules to make sure that I am in compliance, that there may be some things I may need to re-remember and refresh my recollection about. So stay in touch with those over the years and periodically go back and review them. And here to establish and adopt the rules and procedures to keep you on the right side of actions. And the reason we talk about that is you don't wanna wind up in some sort of action or litigation or in court. So that can try to help keep you out of hot water. So following the rules and procedures keeps you out of that hot water, and it keeps you out of court. And as, as I said, our, my focus is Maryland, because I am in Maryland, but Virginia and other regional jurisdictions have very similar, similar rules. Next slide? Alright, rules and procedures to help establish norms to include: procedures by which the body fulfills its functions and executes the land use laws, codes, and proceedings of its jurisdiction. The size of boards and commissions are defined by the rules of procedure. Guidelines about elections of officers on an annual basis, or however would, however you do it periodically. Location and frequency of meetings. In the city of Gaithersburg, we have meetings established on the first and third Wednesdays of the month, and they start at 7:30. That's our procedure. And we also have, the rules and procedures also talk about process and flow of the meeting, and how the meeting should be conducted. And it's really good to have a guideline so that you can keep focused, you can keep standards, and everyone understands what's going to happen, how it's going to be conducted. You, your, one of your major roles is, is, as a body, is to make recommendations to your jurisdiction's governing body, and then they will make the ultimate decision. But you wanna use all the information that you have to make sound recommendations to your jurisdiction, governing, to your jurisdiction's governing body. And if these rules and procedures help you interpret and understand how the governing body enacts and enforces land use and development laws and codes. And also, and here's the guidelines, standards, and practices. It's very important that you understand your rules and procedures and review them periodically. Next slide? Communication. Communication is essential. Planning commissioners and Boards of Zoning Appeal Members stay in constant communication and collaboration with professional planners that you have in your jurisdictions, your jurisdictional governing bodies, and also the public, as well as your, you know, your own planning commissioner cohorts or Boards of Zoning and Commission cohorts. Planning commissioners and Boards of Zoning Appeal Members follow strict rules to ensure the public is aware of development and redevelopment, land use changes, code enforcement, and jurisdictional and environmental impacts to establish policies and procedures. It is very important that you over-communicate to your governing body, your jurisdiction, professional planners, and everyone. Keep everyone in that communication loop. Document, document, document. Planning commissioners and Boards of Zoning Appeals Members work in conjunction with staff to actively listen. And that's what, and Roxanne will be talking about this later, and some of our things will kinda overlap. And I'm sure Michael will talk about it too, but active listening is very important to see what questions a community may have, what concerns they have, and relate those to land use and development topics. Planning commissioners and Boards of Zoning Appeals work to establish and maintain fairness and impartiality. That is very important. Ethics are just, I can't overemphasize, and I'm sure Roxanne will talk about that, and stay educated and up-to-date. Joe mentioned that, and it's very important that you keep on top of things and you come prepared to meetings. Sometimes you can't, like Joe said, maybe there's something going on, but try to stay as prepared as possible. Because one of the things you've gotta remember, that the things that we do now will be in place for years to come, and will outlive us. So we wanna make the best decision with the best information that we have. Planning commissioners and Boards of Zone Appeal Members are always prepared, attentive, and take very seriously the work that they do. Their advisory role, as it pertains to the governing body, is very, very important. When I first started on the planning commission, our planning commissioner, her name was Blanche Keller, and she's since passed on, but she was a great mentor and chair of our planning commission. But she used to always have our room very, very cold. And I asked her, I said, "Blanche, why is this room so cold?" She said, "Because I want you to stay awake and pay attention." So I don't know if you have to go that far, but just be very, very attentive to what's going on. Next slide, please. Education. We just talked about that, but I'll talk a little bit more. You should always avail yourself to opportunities for new and continuing education as a planning commissioner or Boards of Zoning Appeal Member. Best planning practices, rules, land use, environmental impacts, and regulatory updates. There's so much going on now with environmental that it's very, very, very important that we keep up with what's going on, the trends, and what is gonna be coming in place soon. It's always a good practice for members to consistently collaborate with others and to communicate with the public and abilitate themselves for proper services. Very, very important. And you must not remain steeled. A lot of individuals will just focus on what's going on in their community. Of course, you wanna be focused on your community, but what's going on in surrounding communities and in the region and in the state that you're in, and also your neighboring states? Because some of the things that are going on may be coming your way. A lot of people are looking at, you know, you know, use of homes right now is, you know, and there's a lot of different things when people are renting out rooms and just, you know, that kind of thing. So that's very, very important that we find out what's going on and what the trends are in other areas. And some organizations may have already gone through some of the things that you may be facing. So it's important to reach out. And also, if I can give a plug to Maryland Planning Commissioners Association, we have lots of information, and we do a lot of collaboration throughout the state. You should always try to attend workshops, and we, we give workshops too. As I said, we have a Maryland focus, but I'm sure there's a lot of collaboration. And there's also the consortium that Joe will talk about a little later. I think, I think he mentioned it earlier. And there's always opportunities, you know, through the APA and that kind of thing, for you to get updates, stay updated, and stay informed. Next slide, please. Legal components and requirements. It's of the utmost importance to understand, follow, and practice all laws, codes, regulations, best practices, codes for your jurisdiction. Now, I'm not saying you've gotta be a lawyer or paralegal or anything like that, but have a great understanding. Most planning commissions, you know, have access to the city attorney, or they may have someone to specifically assign to you. If you have any questions, reach out to your, your legal advice to make sure that you're following all practices and laws, and you're not erring on the side of something that may get you into a situation. It's always important to ask a question if you don't know. And if there's any doubt, reach out. Okay? It's, and it's amazing, it's an amazing practice. I put this here, it's amazing to be ethical beyond reproach and operate with integrity and good character, because people are watching you. Okay? And I put this here, operate in complete sunshine and in the light of day. Remember your oath of office? That was the one thing that really stuck out to me when I took my oath of office, and I had to swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America. I said, "Oh, my God, what did I get myself into?" But, you know, what we do, you know, you wanna have fun with what you're doing, but you wanna also understand the seriousness and solemnity of this job. So just keep that in mind. So, so don't get into any side deals, any promises, any, any personal arrangements with somebody. Say, "Oh, I'm gonna take care of you." No, 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 no. No agendas, no favors, and ex parte communications. I'm sure that Roxanne's gonna talk about that, but that, those are absolute no-no's. And one of the things we have that's in our governing in the state of Maryland is the Open Meetings Act. So we can stay very above the board and make sure that everyone is aware of everything that's going on as we conduct our proceedings. Next slide, please. Alright, so I just wanted to share with you just an example of our agenda that we use for the city of Gaithersburg. This is our most recent meeting, and we have, we always post this on our website. We have it available for everyone. We, everything is totally transparent, and this is an example. If you wanna copy, feel free to reach out to Joe or me, and I can make this aware, make, make this available to you. But we just, I just wanna show you how we conduct our business. We have minutes. As you can see, we approved two sets of minutes during this meeting. And this is just an example of an agenda and, and how we schedule our meetings. So I think, Joe, I think that's it. I think I have one more slide. Okay, those are the things that we went over in summary. I have those here. And then I have some online resources. The Maryland Planning, the Planning Page is a great local and regional resource. I use it a lot, and we also updated as a part of the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. And Planner's Web is totally invaluable. If, if you do nothing more after this meeting, go out to Planner's Web. There is so much valuable information out there that will help you in your endeavors. So I just wanna thank you. I wanna reach out to you all if you have any questions. Feel the, feel free to reach out to me, and just the best wishes and best luck in your daily endeavors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dani. And you mentioned it, and Taylor mentioned it earlier, the Mid-Atlantic Planning Collaboration, which has been going since on, now, almost, you know, about a year and a half. And I know the MPCA is, is happy and honored to be, you know, representing the citizen planner, the, the needs and interests of citizen planners in that collection of, of planning organizations and focusing on, on the Mid-Atlantic. So thank you very much, Dani. Alright, we're gonna move on to Roxanne.
Hello, good afternoon. I'll just tell you, like you can see, I am the chairperson for the Maryland Planning Commission, and I've been a commissioner for about 12 years. The chairman for the last three years. So Joe, if you'll go to my next slide. Dani stole some of my thunder, but that's okay. So I talk about planning commission responsibilities. So you, like Dani said, the first thing you need to do is to become familiar with the land use articles. And I'm talking here only for the state of Maryland, the land use articles in the state of Maryland, because these are the articles that create, created planning commissions. Yes, it's full of a lot of legal stuff, but you really need to kinda go through it and understand when and why the planning commission was established, and also how your commissioners are chosen. Our commissioners are chosen by appointment and approval by the town council. The next thing is you need to take your code book for your town, your municipality, and concentrate on the air, well, you should read the whole thing, kinda be familiar with it all. But you also need to concentrate on the areas that the planning commission really deals with, which are land use, zoning, open space. Not that you need to know them chapter and verse, but you need to kind of know about each one of those so that when you're making decisions, they fall within the confines of those codes. Some people don't like the code book. It's very daunting, it's very big, our code book is. And you can't write in it and make notes on it. So I've asked my staff of one, who has made copies of it for me in a notebook form so that I can always make notations on it or put notes on it for questions that I need to have. So the first thing I did when I became a commissioner was I talked to other commissioners in my town about the planning commission. And then I also talked to other commission members to help me to understand and to get acquainted for what I was gonna be doing and what I was getting myself into. If you're meeting, like Dani, we have a specific time. Ours is the last Monday of every month. We are volunteers, but we do get a packet of information two weeks or a week before that we should be familiar with. So what I do is, first off, I put, put the dates for the meetings on my calendar. I know that's kinda simple, but, you know, it's an appointment. You've gotta make that appointment. And then the next thing I do is I look to, when am I going to be able to review all of those things before the meeting? So I am big on time blocking. So I block time for myself. I do it basically the weekend before my meeting. I take some time and I go over what I'm going to have, have to do at that meeting. And I also suggest that you familiarize yourself with the Robert's Rules of Order, because most planning commissions are, meetings are done by Robert's Rules of Order. And it helps you to conduct your meetings. Okay, next slide, Joe, please. So the other part, which Dani kinda whatever, is research and work in preparation. So like I said, you'll be receiving a packet of information prepared by your staff. Like I said, ours is a staff of one. So I'm in constant communication with him. And I go over, the agenda is there, and I go over this, all the supporting documents for the agenda for that meeting. I make notes on my agenda. Read the minutes, make sure they're okay from the previous meeting, so they'll be approved. And once again, like I said, since we're volunteers, you've gotta set aside time to do this, to study this, because the items you're discussing are for the benefit of the town. This might require you to go to the, to an address, a house, a plot of land for you to see exactly what you're going to be talking about. I might wanna also, at this time, say, you can't, you can't, you can, if you schedule, some staff, planning commissioners and commissions plan what they'd call field visits or field sites to the area. As long as they're publicly advertised, you may have those. But no more than two of you really should go to any site at any one time. And you're just looking at the site. If someone, if you're at a house and someone says, "Can I help you?" You just say, "No, I'm on the commission. I just need to familiarize myself with what's going on." Don't engage yourself in any conversation about the situation, because then you're getting into what's known as ex parte communication, which is frowned upon. When you become a commissioner, like I said, you receive a copy of the code book and the instructions. You can also view it online, but most people do view it online. And you should be ready to ask questions of the applicant about the codes and stuff when you have a meeting or their representative, or go to the staff so that you can make an informed decision. Okay, Joe? So when you're appointed as a planning commission in the state of Maryland, the state of Maryland requires you to take what's known as the PCTC or the Planning Commissioners Training Course. It has been developed by the Maryland Department of Planning. It is offered many times throughout the year, virtually, as well as in-person. It is taught by people, other planning people, people that are, have been trained to teach the class. We have attorneys that teach the class, past, past planning commission members that teach the class. It's a great class, but it's, it's a 30,000 view of the, of the world of planning. So you need to dig yourself deeper, but this is the only requirement that the state of Maryland has. So after I took the class, I quickly noticed, well, I asked my staff member, I said, "Okay, so what other courses are there for citizen planners?" And she said, "Well, really, there isn't any. You can go to the Association of Independent Planners." There's a lot of different classes for professionals. However, there aren't for us who are volunteers. So I started to attend the annual conference of the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association, where I gathered a wealth of information. I really became excited that I could go to these things, but they were only once a year. So then I found out that that was probably the main source of the education, other than websites, Planner's Web, or whatever. But for the state of Maryland specifically, it was this conference. So as it were, I became a board member because education is important to me. I won't go into a long diatribe about what we've done, but I think the Commissioners Association of the state of Maryland has done a great job in helping to educate planners. And I also have reached out to other members of other planning commissioners to ask questions. And I also have a mentor who is a professional planner herself, but she's also been on citizen planning boards. And I tend to talk to her about once or twice a month. It's become a great relationship, a friendship. It's become a great relationship, a friendship, and we actually kind of, we actually say that we mentor each other, but it's great that I know somebody that I can lean on that has an outside view that I can help with. And so, and then as far as, like I said, is my growth as a planning commissioner, I started as a Board of Appeals member. I was on there for, I, on there for about six years. A vacancy came up on the planning commission and the mayor appointed me to the planning commission. And that was 12 years ago. And now, like I said, I've served as the chairperson for the last three years. So the next slide. I know there's a lot of questions coming in. Joe, do we want to take all the questions at the end of the, at the end of the webinar?
Yeah, I think that would be best.
Okay.
I guess I try. We'll, we'll have time at the end.
Awesome. So that's great, because thank you for those questions. So the most important thing I learned about being an effective commissioner is to listen and learn. And I can't, I can't express to you the importance of, like Danny said, of listening, because we have to listen to a lot of people. But we have to listen intently and, and listen and pay attention to what they're saying so we can ask questions. You're making recommendations to your town about the community. These decisions should be for the economic and, and welfare of your community. They're not because a group of constituents don't want this thing in the back of their, in back of their subdivision. It might be the best thing in the world for the community to have that. So you do go up against some, as some people who are not in favor of what you're trying to give a record, positive recommendation for. But you have to look out for the whole community. It's very important. You also learn how not to engage. This is the hardest thing for me. I've lived in my town for many years, like almost, well, 60 plus years. So I needed to learn not to engage in my friends or those people when I would go out and be seen. I can't engage them about conversations about any issue that's coming up. And, you know, they want my opinion. They want me, they want me to say no. They want me to know what their opinion is. And I just remind them, when the meeting is, if they want to come and talk, that's fine. If they cannot be in attendance in person, they can send an email to my email, personal email address, which the town has, or send an email through the town staff, and we'll make sure that the email gets read. That's very important when you're talking to people. You don't want to say, oh, I can't talk to you about this, but you have to make them feel warm and fuzzy. We have to also, our, our decisions are made on concrete evidence that's presented to us during the meeting. Not at the grocery store, even if it might be empirical evidence that they know, they've got to show me proof. One of the biggest things that people always talk to me about is, well, that's going to bring the value of my house down. A side note to this, I am a real estate agent, however. Are the only thing that I say to people about that, I do not get into the value part at during the meeting, because I'm not there as a real estate agent. I'm there as a planning commissioner. But I ask them, do you have the empirical evidence? It's going to show that the value of your house is going to be decreased by putting in whatever it is we're putting in. And also you have to keep in mind, you're appointed by the mayor, approved by the town council, but they have no influence on your decisions. Only the evidence that's presented to you at the time of the meeting. And if it's conforming to the code or the zoning regulations of, of your community, that's the decision you're making. When I do talk to a lot of citizen planners, when we've had other classes, I tell them, the mayor's not your boss. He just happens to be the way that you are appointed. And you make your own decisions and you're making your decisions for the health, welfare, and the economic welfare of your community. And that's all I have at this time, Joe.
Thank you, Roxanne. Well, well put. Strong finish. All right. We'll move on to Michael. There we go.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. Tough act to follow. It's going last is the, is the worst place to be in this case when your fellow commissioners. There'll be some overlap, but I'll try to focus mainly on, on our task here is how to actually run the meeting. Just a little bit about myself real quickly. I've been a planning commissioner for about seven years. I spent two of those as, as chair recently during the, during the pandemic, before and after. That's a whole nother webinar in itself, as you can imagine. But so also a practicing planner for several decades. So I bring a unique perspective to the panel, I think, having been on both sides of the fence. And they're completely different, by the way. I always thought that when you're standing and when you're a staff and you're looking at the commission, you have your own viewpoints, and you think you know what it's like to sit in, in, in front of the audience and, and make decisions for people's livelihood. I can promise you, it's, it's completely different. And I learned that through this process. So with that, I'm coming to you from Yorktown, Virginia, and glad to be here. Next slide, Joe. Okay, just a little bit of background here. I wasn't sure when we started this, and make sure that we're talking about local government planning commission meetings, which obviously you've been listening to, you realize that this was all, that this is what this webinar is about. Although some of the information on how to run a meeting and how to be a good board member also applies. Next, next slide, please. Okay, the important point here is, as chair, running the meeting starts way before the, the meeting actually starts. Typically, in my experience, you want to connect with the planning director or the staff contact probably about a week before the meeting. By then, you've, you, you've likely received the planning commission staff reports. If you haven't, it's probably coming soon. But I'd usually engage with the planning director, talk with them about, hey, you know, what, let's go over the agenda. Do you expect a large turnout from citizens? Are there any hiccups we're dealing with? And what, what do I need to know in advance? So you can start thinking about it. Roxanne and Danny both, I think, both talked about doing your homework, reading the staff reports once you get them, and be familiar with your comprehensive plan. Typically, they're pretty large. Like Roxanne said, you just can't digest the whole thing, but be familiar with it. Keep in mind that as a planning commissioner, your number one charge or duty is to develop a comprehensive plan for your community. That's why you're there. So keep that in mind and use that as a guide when you're making decisions. Also be familiar with your zoning ordinance, particularly if there's issues that come up or are addressed in the staff reports. You might want to go to that section of the zoning ordinance, familiarize yourself with it. So during the meeting, you're prepared to answer questions. And if, if you start a week before the meeting, it gives you plenty of opportunity to call a staff and say, hey, I don't understand what this means in the zoning ordinance, which is frequent, by the way. They're, they're very technical documents. So always be thinking, connecting with your staff in advance. Visit the sites and become familiar with the cases. One thing I always like to point out to new commissioners is, hey, there's no replacement for physically going to the site of the case. The maps you're given from the planning staff, they're really great, aerial views, zoning maps, future land use. But sometimes they're dated and there's no replacement for actually going to a site and looking at it yourself in person. We talked about be careful not to talk to people about it, so you're not giving certain entities leverage over others and getting their opinion to you. So go and check the site out, look it over. And I promise you, you'll have a different view, viewpoint. And now's a good time, after you've visited a site, develop questions you may have to ask the applicant or staff. I usually jot a few down. Doesn't have to be a lot. Your fellow commissioners are going to ask a lot of questions as well, and staff is going to cover a lot of them, but it's a good idea, while it's fresh in your mind, to, to go ahead and do that. So here we are, a day before the meeting, or let's say the day of the meeting. I'll, I, I would typically make another call to the planning staff, because now that the staff report's gone out and is posted online, and people have gotten wind of, of what's coming up on the agenda, certain things change. Sometimes there's things that have to do with the staff report. The agenda may change. They may change the order. Sometimes an applicant will back out. They don't have, they're not ready. And so you want to connect at, at the last minute, have that really good, warm, fuzzy feeling that you have a grasp on what you're about ready to, to lead when you get to the meeting. This is obvious, but as you, as a commissioner, you know, not everyone does this, arrive at the meeting early. And that's not to talk about the cases with your fellow commissioners. We've, you've heard before from Danny and Roxanne, is you, you don't want to discuss the case before the meeting with your commit, fellow commissioners. It's tempting, we're all human, but try to refrain from doing so. So your, your, your vote is not influenced by others' opinion before you hear all the facts in the case. And everybody loves a chairman who starts on time. Our, in our case, it's, our planning commission meetings are, are filmed live, and the IT people have it teed up, so it's really hard to, you, you can't start late, basically. So, but for those of you that don't, everyone loves a chairman that starts on time. Next slide, Joe, please. Okay, this is an important one. The chair sets the tone for the meeting, how the meetings run. Be professional and dress professional. That doesn't mean you have to wear a suit in, in every case. There's localities around where, where, where I'm a commissioner, you know, they, they dress a business casual. We just happen to wear suits, but be professional, look professional, and, and people will take you serious. Read over the mission of the commission. In Virginia, we have the, our, our, our state code that applies to planning commission meetings. And we have, it's a, a small paragraph that we read at the beginning of every meeting. And that kind of says what our mission is. That state enabling legislation has given us the authority to do X in our state, and we read that every single time. It's not just to remind ourselves, but it's sort of citizens in the audience and those listening at home. Rules of conduct. You may have certain rules of conduct for your commission that you adopted. A couple bullets down, I talk about bylaws. You might want to familiarize yourself with your bylaws for your commission. It's very helpful. We've also mentioned Robert's Rules of Order. There's a lot to it. It can be complicated. I would look it over, and if you've got any questions, your city, town, county attorney, be glad. They're usually experts at that, especially if they're in your planning meeting. Someone mentioned before that as you become a new commissioner, it's always good to sit back and watch others. If you have a chairman that you idolize, or you've, someone you've seen in the past, a professional associate, think about how they ran meetings and the, the good things they did and the mistakes they may have made, and use that as a template, and sit back and watch others and kind of learn, learn the ropes. Your job as chairman, of course, is to lead the meeting to a successful conclusion, that all agenda items are addressed. So you want to keep the meeting moving, but not, but without rushing. You don't want to cut anybody off. Obviously, if you have a large agenda mi, items, a controversial rezoning, you're gonna have to put time limits on citizens and, and those speaking before the commission, but rushing everyone gives the impression that you're not taking it seriously, and all you want to do is just get, go home. We all want to go home and don't want to be there until midnight, of course, but there's times when you have to. And it's important to, to keep the meeting, meeting moving without appearing to rush. As chair, your job is to project a sense of order, discipline, and dignity while remaining calm. Don't let citizens, the applicant, a developer, a fellow commissioner, say or do something out of line. Be quick to caution them to calm down and to remain calm while addressing the commission. We're here to listen to your comments, and we want to take everything into consideration, but, but you want to be respectful and professional as you do so. Joe had mentioned earlier about getting to know your fellow commissioners. That doesn't mean you have to be their friend or, or go out in the evening with them to dinner, but get to know who, who they are and their mannerisms. Oftentimes as chair, and I know if my fellow commissioners know this, you can tell when a commissioner e, either feels strongly about something, or they're willing to ask a question just by their mannerism, gestures. They don't always, and some, some are hesitant to speak up. And so, but you can tell by the look on their face. So get to know them, know what makes, what moves them, and that'll help you make your job easier as chairman, knowing that you have someone on your left or on your right that is dying to ask a question, because you can tell by their, their body language. They're lean, they may lean forward. So keep that in mind. Roxanne mentioned earlier about the community as a whole. Remember that the community is your client. Not, not an applicant, not a developer, not the lone citizen neighbor, not yourself as a commissioner, not you're an elected official. It's the community as a whole. You're making, oh, you're making decisions for the entire community. And as Danny stipulated, these decisions will last long after you're gone. So you've got to take them seriously and, and remember who the audience is. Next slide. A lot of times with commissioners, we get in a hurry. We have minutes or documents we want to approve, and there's always someone that, you know, wants to hurry up and make a motion to approve it. I have found from my experience that you got to give people time. You got to make a motion, take a pause, listen, ask if anybody has any amendments, additions or changes to the minutes or the documents, and then pause and wait. Lot, lot of time, people will refrain from speaking up when you're rushing through things. So I'll pause, and that allows, and oftentimes I'll hear someone say, hey, on page three, there's a mistake, and, and we correct it. So this is a small tidbit that I've learned that's important. Avoid taking sides on an issue. And you want to avoid conflict of interest. I worked for Defense Department for the Navy, and we had a, an application that came before us that was adjacent to a Navy installation. The Navy didn't object to it, but, but wrote a letter saying they had no objection. However, I still recuse myself as chairman. I left the room and went and sat in the lobby. So I was not in, in, in any way, shape, or form influencing any members. Your locality may handle that differently, but I felt it was important. So if you feel like, if you're even have a hint or there's a perception that you may have a conflict of interest, I encourage you to recuse yourself. I mentioned this already briefly. Insist everyone speak politely and in orderly fashion. There's no need for rudeness, foul language in a meeting. We're all there to move the meeting along and get to a, a successful conclusion. You want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to be heard without dominating the conversation. My fellow commissioners, you know that there's, we always have a commissioner or two that dominates the conversation. They ask the most questions, or they drown out a fellow commissioner. Same with the citizens. There may be one citizen that wants to speak two or three or four times, and, and there's other citizens that have yet to be heard, and you don't want to drown them out. So you want to give everyone a reasonable, and I say reasonable because, you know, we're, sometimes there's a lot of people in the audience, as you see in the photo below you. There can be times where there's a lot of people signed up to speak, and so you have to put a time limit on them. Just a matter of practice, when, when I do that, and we have a three-minute time limit, when the time limit runs out, I give people a chance to finish their train of thought or finish their sentence. I don't cut them off in mid-sentence, because I'm thinking to myself, I'm here to listen to what they have to say. So if they finished their thought in a reasonable, another 10 or 15, 20 seconds, I let it go. I'm willing to stay another 20 minutes in the meeting to make sure we heard everyone had a voice. Ensure that the meeting is fair and objective. Listen more, talk less. You're being watched. As I mentioned, a lot of them today are live on Facebook, on TV. People see your facial reactions. They see, can tell what you're thinking. And so you want to make sure that you're spending a lot of time trying to listen instead of dominating the conversation. Roxanne also mentioned this. Ensure decisions are based on information that comes before the commission during the meeting. We don't need to take the comments that you heard at the grocery store from a, from someone that heard about a rezoning or a case and use that to base your from a, from someone that heard about a rezoning or a case and use that to base your decision. Everything should be based on the process and everyone that comes before the commission, whether it's the citizens, the applicant, fellow commissioner, staff report, town, city, county attorney, all those have equal weight. Not one of them over outweighs another, so keep that in mind. Make sure you're following the legal, legal requirements. I believe most commissions have a, an attorney, and they'll, they'll keep you straight, and avoid side, side conversations. It, we're all human, and occasionally you get into a habit where you want to lean over to your fellow commissioner and say something like, uh, that's incorrect, or I can't believe they said that, or uh, so you want to refrain from that, because the audience doesn't know what you're saying, and they, they think you're talking between yourselves, or, or you might be influenced by one thing or another, so try to avoid those at all times. Next slide, please. Just as the meeting doesn't start when it begins, it's not over when it ends. After the meeting, download with your fellow commissioners after the meeting. And, and again, that doesn't mean going out to dinner with them, uh, but oftentimes I'll walk to my car and with a few commissioners, and I'll say, hey, what do you think? How, how, how do we do? Or how did I do? Did we get everyone, did, did everyone get a chance to speak? Were we, did we cut anybody off? Uh, what do you think about the staff reports? Or where do you think this is headed? So that'll give you a good idea of like an after-action report on, on, on how you did. And that, that goes to the next bullet. What can we do to improve what went right and what went wrong? And again, I follow up, I typically follow up with the planning director the next day or two. I give a couple days. So ha- they have a chance to either the city manager, the mayor, council members, or our other folks get a chance to give them some feedback on what they saw during the commission meeting. And that way I'll get a, a, a good read on, on how we did and what we need to do to improve. Oftentimes in planning commission meetings, you're, there's, there's actions for the commissioners to do. There's either commission reports, other committees that you may be on, belong to. I, I'm the chairman of our, our comprehensive plan update committee, so I will report that during the, during the uh, uh, during the meeting. And a, a, a lot of times I'll make notes before that, so you have action items um oftentimes to do uh after the meeting. I mentioned, uh, citizen input, was it adequate? Already talked about that. And start thinking about what's next on the horizon for the commission. As a community, you may be planning to update your zoning ordinance, or you may be undergoing, like we are, comprehensive plan update, and think about what's headed in the future. What are the big cases that are coming up, and start interacting with your uh, with your planning director. With that, I think that's the last slide, Joe, I believe.
Thank you, Michael. A lot of good stuff in there. Uh, before we go on to the, the, the item, I guess I, 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 this idea of downloading with fellow commissioners after meeting and after these stuff, does, do any of your jurisdictions have formal debriefings um established as part of your um, your schedule or system?
In my case, we do not, Joe, and, and we do not have a formal debriefing, other than the, the, the call, or sometimes I go in person to talk to the planning director and discuss it with them on what we did right, what we did wrong, and so we don't have a formal one.
Joe, we don't either. Um, I tend to, like Mike said, I, I tend to let a day or two go by before I call my staff member, but you, you know, there's this thing about Open Meetings Act in the state of Maryland, so if we have more than three commissioners together anywhere, that's considered a quorum. So I tend not to ta- I mean, I'll talk to them individually maybe, or send an email, but I don't, we don't have any formal debriefing, but that's a good idea, actually.
And thank, thank you, Roseanne, uh, uh, Ro- Roseanne, I can't believe, I'm sorry, Roxanne, for saying that. It is really, if the three, if there's more than two, two or more gathered, then, then that's an issue with Open Meetings Act. But I did want to make a comment uh in, in, in about something that Michael said. I recall early on in my career, and, and this is where you have to find your voice. And that's something that the individual, thank you, mention the borders, owning appeal members need to do is to find their voice. Is there was something that, that, that troubled me, and I didn't say anything at the meeting? And then I was walking out to my car, and I said something to one of my colleagues, and he goes, you should have said that, you should have mentioned that. That was a crucial point of information that would have actually turned the tide on this, this decision. And, and he's just, and, and we've made, we've rendered our decision, we can't go back. So, so find your voice. And be deliberate, and, and that's what the deliberation is about. Talk about things. It may not, you know, you may bring something up that doesn't may, may not seem to you have great relevance, but it might, and it might spark something else. So it's important to, to be thoughtful and, and expressive.
Danny, that's a good, that's a good point. Uh, I've had the same experience myself, where I've been appro- approached and said, well, why didn't you ask that question during the meeting? And uh, you know, and there, there's been times where my mind has changed based on another commissioner's question. And I think to myself, you know, I was totally against this when I came here tonight, in the back of my head, we're all human. We, we read the staff report, we're thinking, no way, and then you hear someone ask a question, a fellow commissioner, or it's a citizen. And you think to yourself, man, I, I can't believe that. And so don't be afraid to speak up. Like I said, don't dominate the conversation, but if you have a point to make, make it, because your fellow commissioners sometimes are basing their decision based on what you say and the questions you ask.
Yeah. Hey, hey, Joe, are we gonna go through the questions? There was one very important question someone asked about, like somebody.
Yeah, I think we're gonna do that at the end, Danny.
Okay, 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 all right, thanks. I, I just did not want to miss that point that the gentleman asked, so, so, yeah, okay.
We should, we'll have plenty of time for, for questions. Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, well, I'm gonna turn it over now to Chair Hempel.
Yes, so what we're going to do now is just take a small snippet of um, of how we would conduct a planning uh commissioners meeting. So we, we're basically kind of following the uh, uh, the agenda. So we've already called the meeting to order, uh, done the, approved the minutes or whatever, so we're into, into the um action part of the meeting. So I would say, uh, the next item on our agenda is SE twenty-one dash zero eight, special exception for home occupation and daycare. Uh, the Smith family, excuse me, is the um applicant. So I'm going to ask, Joe, would you please give the staff report?
Thank you, Chair Hempel and members of the planning commission. Mister Michael Smith and his wife, Ms. Jane Smith, are requesting to establish a licensed home daycare business at their residence that will provide care for a total of ten children five days a week. The Smiths' three children will be included in the total count. The hours of operation will be six AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. Most drop-offs and pickups will occur in the Smiths driveway, but some may occur at the curb. For this code, for this case, code section one-one-five twenty-eight D four applies and allows such a home occupation in all residential districts, subject to meeting the requirements of that district. The Smiths' home is in the R-two district. Per the code section, the special exception application must meet the following standards. The external ex, the external appearance of the structure must remain that of a dwelling, and not include business-related signage. The proposed use must be consistent with the My Town Comprehensive Plan. Use will have proper and sufficient street access and not cause congestion, and not more than thirty percent of the gross floor area of the dwelling unit can be devoted to the home occupation. Next, I would like to show you a highly technical engineered rendering that the applicant has submitted as part of their application. As you can see here, uh, this is well-designed. The staff believes this is well-designed and well-considered. And we, I encourage, I hope that the, the planning commission was able to take the time to look at that, this, and as part of the packet that we sent you last week. So staff finds that the application meets the requirements of, of section one-one-five twenty-eight D four of the zoning code and recommends approval of the special exception request.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Um, can I next hear from the applicant, uh, Mr. Smith?
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Michael Smith, and this is my wife Denise. We live at two oh five Maple Street here in town. Madam Chair, I'd like to let you know that my wife is a licensed daycare provider, and we're renting space in town in a limited business area. Our lease was up, and we found it was much cheaper to operate out of our own home. Once we made some improvements, and by the way, we put our life savings into this, we started operating out of our home last month, but we were cited by the zoning code enforcement for not being in compliance, and they said we needed a special exception. We immediately applied to the town, and we're here to answer any questions the commission may have of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, do I have here any questions from any other commission members?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chair Hempel. I just, I have a, just a couple safety questions that I want to ask, but I want to start with, with staff. I'm looking at the, 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 as you labeled it, the highly technical rendering, and I'm looking at the street, you know, how it is in proximity to the house. Um, I'm, I have a couple safety issues. How, a- as far as drop-offs and pickups like that, um, have there ever considered, has there been a traffic study? And um, are there some considerations that we may not have um maybe heard tonight about safety as it relates to drop-off and pickups?
It's been a question, Commissioner Winborn. Uh, no, to, your first question, there hasn't been a, a traffic study. But uh, we could continue to discuss that if, 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 if the commission considers that necessary. I, I will say that the speed limit on the adjacent street is twenty miles per hour, uh, and the street does include a sidewalk in front of the house. Uh, it's in a low-density suburban, single-family detached residential development. Density's around two and a half dwelling units per acre, and the, the street there, you can see by this uh, uh, technical drawing, is thirty feet wide. This is staff's opinion that the low-density nature of the neighborhood, the extended one-and-a-half-hour drop-off time, a, a street with accommodating street parking, wide enough, or street width wide enough to accommodate street parking, and the sidewalk will limit the potential of peak traffic time, uh, of a peak traffic time, ensure that both pedestrian and the vehicular flow is regular and safe. Also, dur- in the applicants, um, i- in the application, the applicant noted that during the, the six to seven-thirty AM drop-off time, that they would monitor in vehicles dropping off children and, and welcoming them. Uh, and as needed, the applicant will request that parents clear the travelway, ensure the safety of other vehicles and pedestrians.
Well, thank you very much. That, that satisfies my question and my concern. I'm, I'm, I, I don't have a problem with, with moving that forward as that relates to that. But I did have one question for the applicant. So, so Mr. Smith, I wanted to ask you about safety around your, uh, your play equipment. Just tell me a little bit about that, please.
Mr. Smith, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Winborn. I appreciate that. We, we take, we take the kids in our daycare center very, uh, very seriously, and we have established an area in our backyard with fencing around it for security, and we also have security cameras on the back of our house that are positioned to keep an eye on the playground area at all times. I, I will note this, Commissioner Winborn, that no kids will be playing outside without someone from our daycare superviser-ing, supervising them while they're outside. So I hope that answers your question.
It, it absolutely does, and I'm, I'm, I mean, I know some of what you said is, is not in the context of the planning commission, but I, I just, you know, we always want to err on the side of safety. So I just, you know, not that it would necessarily prevent us from moving forward with your your application, but I just wanted to understand and make sure, you know, just give you some, some ideas about that, but you've already seen, seems like you've already taken care of that, and it seems like you're gonna, these kids will be well-cared for, and I'm happy to hear that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
At this time, I'll um open the uh floor up to the public. Before you speak, please state your name and the address where you live. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, good evening. My name is Brenda Lewis, and I live at two oh three Maple Street, next door, right next door to the applicants. They came and talked to me last week, and I told them I wasn't necessarily opposed to this. However, after reading the staff report online, I'm now inclined to ask you to, to, to vote against this daycare. Ten kids, are you kidding me? The Smiths have three kids of their own, and they can't properly take care of them already. Their kids are always in my backyard trespassing, and the place is always noisy. We have a narrow street in our neighborhood, uh, Madam Chair, and with no curb and gutter, and there's little room for, for uh two-way vehicles. In fact, school buses have a hard time passing. There's also little on-street parking. As you mentioned, staff said there's some on-street and some off, but I can tell you what, when there's a lot of people in our neighborhood, there's no places for anybody to park. By the way, I'd like to mention that when the Smiths-in-laws come over, they have to park in front of our house in the street, because there's very little parking. I gotta tell you, this neighborhood is simply not suitable for a business that's like this, and I ask that the commission not re- support this request. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a standby for questions.
Thank you, Miss Lee. Um, is there any further discussion, and from any of our uh commission members?
Madam Chair, I'd like to just address what I just heard. Based on that evidence that I just heard, and based on the um evidence that I got from the staff and the applicant, I don't see any reason why we can't move forward with this. So um, I'm willing to render a decision.
Okay, I'm, um, at this time then is, uh, do, are you making a motion, Danny?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, would you please make that formal for me?
Yes, okay, and I, I'm sorry, can you please give me the um, the, the application? I, I didn't write it down. What was it, SE, what was it called?
SE twenty-one dash zero eight.
Zero eight, thank you. Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of SE twenty-one dash zero eight, finding it in performance with all of the laws, codes, and regulations of our jurisdiction.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second? I'll second it. So it's been moved and seconded that we um give, recommend a staff approval for this special exemption. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're we're giving um the special exception to Mr. and Mrs. Smith for their uh daycare. Thank you. Okay, that's kind of how it goes.
Well, that, that was great. That was fun. Um, I guess any specific insight from, from you all, you know, not, no longer in the roles of uh our, of our specific roles about, um, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to, and I think this is very important. I think Michael and Roxanne would really agree with me. Is that we're not a rubber stamp. So, so deliberation is good. To ask questions and to have them answered to your satisfaction is a good process. But to get them out there and to, and to, to be deliberate, to be thoughtful, and that, I keep going back to that. Roxanne mentioned it, Michael mentioned it, of course, Joe, you know all about that. But it's very important that we get the thoughts out there, that we don't walk to the parking lot, like I did, with something that would have been potential, a potential game changer. So, you know, have those conversations, ask those questions, and have that, have, you know, real back and forth about things. Michael and Roxanne, please.
I, I just wanted to follow up, Danny, just to say that oftentimes citizens and, uh, you know, people participating, they, they know uh, that they can't stop something if it meets the zoning ordinance. But I've learned over time in my career, people just want to be heard.
Yes.
And they know, they know you're likely not gonna vote in their favor. They come to, citizens come with ridiculous assumptions. Some of it's not, and you're thinking to yourself, that's not even true, but if you treat them with respect, let them uh hear what they have to say, let their voice be heard. They'll, at the end of the day, they'll be satisfied that they came down to the town or, or city chambers, they gave them their peace of mind. And if you let them, if you hear what they have to say, um, it'll go a long way towards gaining their trust.
That, that's a very good point, and that's why I said, based on the evidence presented, I've, I saw no reason not to move forward. And, and you make a very good point.
I might have, had we not staged this, I probably would have asked if, in fact, they could rope off one of the parking places for the, just for the specific drop-off time. rope off one of the parking places for the, just for the specific drop-off time. Um, that might have, might have helped, but I didn't want to get into the whole, you know, decision and, and, um. But that's one thing I think that I would have, um, asked if it was possible to do that. And I might have, you know, asked them, well, we can't make a decision right now. Come back, let's talk to the town. We have a town police force. I talked to them and see if we could, you know, work it out so that they could have the kids there.
But, but Roxanne, Roxanne, that was a very good point because you didn't say reject. You said defer until more information. And I like that.
I framed the, uh, citizens' comments based on, um, a, a lot of times, the applicant will go talk to their neighbors and initially the neighbors will say, I don't have a problem with it. But oftentimes you'll find out half of them show up at the meeting voicing their, their opposition. Two reasons. One, they really don't want to tell somebody to their face, especially if they live next door, that they're against them. So they give them a kind of a mealy mouth answer, say, well, I'm not necessarily against it. The applicant thinks that they're in favor of it. To them, they hear you're going to be in favor. When the truth is, is come with questions and they may be against it. So that's not always the case when you hear that. I've talked to everyone and they're all okay. Um, I, I've found that that's not, that's not always the case.
That's true. That is true.
Um, okay, Joe, do you want to, um, address, there, there are a couple, there's one in the chat and then there's a couple in the question and answer, I think.
Yeah, we could go ahead and get into questions if you guys would like.
Okay.
Um, the first one that came in was from Joel. Uh, he said, my greatest concern and desire to learn how to respond appropriately to is authoritarian misbehavior by planning board and senior planning department appointed leadership towards citizens seeking to participate in the planning process. What rules guide how planning board chairpersons treat their audience of residents and business people at a planning board hearing in person and online?
Um, well, I'll go first. First, your rules and procedures first, first guides that. I know in our rules and procedures, we talk about, um, being, um, it's not, it's not worded being nice, but how you conduct yourself towards other people. If your commission, if your commission chairman, and I think Joel, you also put this in the, in the, um, question and answer. If your, uh, commission chairman is not allowing open participation, um, and he's, and you feel that he, uh, is huddling with the developers and the landowners before and after the planning board hearings. Uh, he's, if he's suppressing open and public, uh, participation, then he needs to be brought up, uh, to your ethics committee because those are ethics violations. And they need to be, uh, taken care of.
Absolutely, absolutely Roxanne. And it's important that we, first of all, maintain decorum in our meetings. But we, we act responsibly on both sides. And if we're not acting responsibly, we need to be held to account.
Right. I think somebody else, oh, okay.
Um, all right, uh, we have another question, um, from Thomas. Uh, this question always challenged me. What considerations does a planning commissioner make compared to a town council or city council person? Both look a wide range of concerns. So do they look at the same considerations? Or does an elected official take a wider range of considerations in place? I e tax base, social or economic or specific impacts to community services versus a planning commissioner who per view is more focused on the community plan and land use ordinances?
I'll, I'll, I'll start off with this one. Um, you know, as a planning commission, we're charged with making land use decisions, okay? Recommendations. I always remind people when I'm chair, I don't make the final decision here. That's up to our board of supervisors. They're elected officials. And it's true, they take in a broader range of calculus when they're making their decisions. Um, to their, uh, based on their constituents and all other factors. I'm like Danny has mentioned, I'm making my recommendations solely based on the information I heard during the meeting. And solely based on, uh, on land use that is comparable to our comprehensive plan, our zoning ordinance and those kind of things. So, good question.
That's a good question. And, and you may, you may have some, you know, disagreements or you may not agree with it. Or you may not even want it yourself. It's not about you. It's about what the, the land use code is and those factors, not my personal opinion. Good point, Michael.
Yes, unfortunately, uh, we're kind of like the, the, um, the judicial part of the, uh, those decisions. Our decisions are really, they're black and white. If it meets what's in the code, you can't say no.
Right.
You know, I mean, you, you, you just can't deny it because it's not going to look nice there. It, you know, or that's not the right place for it. You can't tell someone, a landowner, that they can't put there what they want to put there if it meets all the qualifications.
Thank you Roxanne.
That's positive recommendation to the town council and then there the final decision.
Thank you Roxanne. When I explained that to one of my neighbors one day, they just said, well, that's not fair. I said, no, it is fair. It really is fair. A developer has the right to develop the property. What we make sure is that it meets the criteria, the guidelines in, in that kind of thing. That's all we do. That's our deal. If we do something else, we're not doing what we're supposed to do. People may not like it, but that is, that's the truth.
Our next question was from Ross. Um, he wanted to know who is possible to get the contact information for the panelists. His organization has a project underway to develop a series of training modules for flood resiliency for planning commissioners. And he'd love to connect and chat about the most effective ways to deliver those resources. Uh, we do typically include contact information for our panelists in a follow-up email, as long as, um, all of our panelists are okay with that.
I'm fine.
And then we had, um, somebody made a comment about the meeting presentation. Um, the address on the staff report doesn't match the address the applicant gave. Is this approval on the right property?
They also asked about the, the, the north areas. They've been really, really critical.
Well, that's good.
Take, take us to task. Take us to task. That probably was on me, just ad lib, uh, during the whole process. I had to make sure that I got Michael Smith's name right. Cause that's, I had a different name. And, um, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure since this was all, uh, uh, fictitious, uh, example, um, there was no intent to, uh, mislead anybody.
But, but that's a good point because oftentimes in meetings, we will correct the record, even if it's just like a digit off or something like that. We will correct the record.
It happens. Yeah.
Yeah, our next question, um, this anonymous question, I have found that throughout my career, planning commissions and Board of Zoning Appeals give much less weight to municipal staff comments and expertise as compared to applicants and more specifically applicant attorneys. This can be very burdensome for, for municipal staff as staff, like the commission and BZA is responsible for ensuring the requirements of the zoning ordinance are met. And in the case of the zoning administrator is responsible for, responsible for interpreting the zoning ordinance. Have you ever experienced this with your time as a commissioner or BZA member? What would you recommend to staff to remedy this concern?
Well, I know it does get rather daunting when there's land use attorneys up there talking about a specific development or their, uh, their person, um, or the engineer. Luckily, my town attorney comes to all of my planning commission meetings. So, um, it, it's, it's easier to, I feel more comfortable. I don't feel as daunted. Um, and I, I kind of, um, I, I, I'm at an honest to say this because sometimes their attorney is correct in what they're saying. And our commission members are not thinking it out fully. So you kind of have to weigh, you kind of have to understand and weigh what's going on with the, um, with the situation. I don't necessarily, I will sometimes agree with a developer more so than my commission members. Um, but all in all, it kind of bring, it always, it always comes out in the wash, I guess, you say. It always evens out. So I really haven't had a problem with that.
Sorry, I, I'll comment on it and just say that my experience has been the opposite. Oftentimes, we take staff's comments very seriously. It's well, if you have a good planning staff, a lot of their staff reports are well researched based on, uh, the zoning code. And, um, we do give a lot of weight, but I mentioned during my presentation that no one entity should have more weight than anyone else. Uh, whether it's the attorney, the applicant, the citizen, a fellow commissioner. Uh, everybody has, uh, an equal weight in the process and has something to contribute. So, um, if you're finding yourself where, you know, that your commission or board is, is not taking your, um, um, staff comments seriously, or they're misinterpreting your zoning ordinance, you might want to get your attorney involved. Uh, um, or have some training with your commission on, on what, what, um, what's your zoning ordinance or your Board of Zoning Appeals? And, and go over what, uh, what their mission is. Um, that's what I would suggest. But my career being in a couple of localities, being on both sides, staff, staff, uh, reports usually get weighted pretty, uh, um, um, equally as the other members. Occasionally you'll see a commissioner that has, that may be perceived with a conflict of interest and might be an attorney themselves and, and appear to favor, uh, the applicant's attorney, the developer's attorney, and, and that happens. They're human. Um, but I would always recommend, as I mentioned earlier, to recuse yourself in that case. And so you don't have a conflict of interest, so.
But can, can I offer that, that you, there is an opportunity for redress? And, and that's, that's where the chair may come in. And if you can, you know, maybe talk to the chair if you have some concerns. And then, you know, going forward, the chair, the director of planning, then they may to get together and, and see if there is an issue in what there is. But, you know, if there is an issue, don't, don't just sit on it. And I'm glad that this question came up. Um, if there, there are issues that, that folks feel that there's not, um, true and honest and fair, because remember I'm, I brought up being fair, fair deliberations and then, then that's an issue. That's a major issue. You don't want it to go forward and you don't want this to end up in court.
All right, so we've got another question. This one is from Carolyn. Are there criteria concerning impact on neighboring properties? Are SE have to meet that also?
Uh, there aren't in mine. So I can't, I can't, it's, it's kind of straightforward with the, uh, special exception. We can put conditions on it, a special exception, but we, but, um, I guess that if that's what you're talking about, criteria impacting the neighboring property. So if we could have gone on farther with this, I would have put some conditions on it, yes.
That, that's a very good point Roxanne. And if there, if there are something and that comes out in the deliberations and, and the hearing, you know, testimony and that kind of thing, then we may, you know, may need to defer and figure out what those are and get questions back to us. Because once, you know, you get, you get, you get kind of one bite at the apple. Once you make a decision, that's it. So if there are some extenuating or mitigating circumstances, then those need to be brought out. And then sometimes we will take a pause. We defer and then do, do more, more due diligence.
Yeah, we, we might be met talking too about, you know, we don't want to get deep into weeds, but about performance standards and those kind of things. Uh, certain uses have to meet certain standards. I, I think of an easy example, like lighting, you can't have any lighting spill over on the neighboring properties. Uh, that may be a criteria that has to be met regardless. So there may be some performance standards that have to be met. You don't have a choice about and the commission can't choose either way. And, and also like Roxanne said, you can add conditions to it if necessary uh, based on, on the, uh, particular use and, and, and how to mitigate those impacts for the neighborhood.
Uh, looks like we've got time for just our last two questions, um, from Joseph. Uh, commissioners are expected to treat all applicants fairly, but some applicants are represented, represented or assisted by skilled professionals. While some applicants are of limited means and training, should commissions set a lower expectation for non-professionals? Um, and then kind of on the same hand, um, why shouldn't the commission give different weight to different participants? Wouldn't the opinion of legal counsel and, or professional staff be worth more than some random unqualified stranger who just shows up to a meeting with an opinion in an opposition to the commission's own lawyer or staff?
So, since I said that last, since I said that last piece, I'll try and answer what, what I meant by that. Um, I, I don't think you should give staff more weight than anybody else. Um, there are certain, uh, there are certain rulings like the ci- city or county attorney that, that, that are, or end up facts, okay? You can't misinterpret that and you have to accept it. My point was, is that, and, and it's to your point and your question you're asking. You have a non-skilled, uh, citizen that doesn't have a, uh, you know, shiny PowerPoint, not represented by attorney. They show up at the meeting, uh, they're not versed in planning lingo. I don't look at them and go, well, they're, they don't count very much. Uh, I'm going to consider the attorney uh, answers more or the staff report. I look, I consider, they're part of the process. They're the ones that are on the receiving end of what's being proposed. Specifically if they're a neighbor or adjacent property owner. So to me, that's, that's very meaningful. And oftentimes I, I think to myself, you know, when we leave, this person's going to have to live with this use from now on as their neighbor or adjacent property. And so, um, I, I believe that everyone's, uh, weight is equal. Unless it's a fact, like I said, like a county attorney or a city attorney that says something, then you just have to accept that uh, as, as, uh, part of the process. So I hope I'm being clear on, on how each entity uh, has its, has a similar weight in the whole process. Everybody's important.
Yep. My two biggest things is when someone comes in that's in opposition or my, the two biggest things I have are people are always saying, there is a traffic issue. And number two, it's going to devalue the, my property. And the first thing that I ask that person is, are you qualified to make that decision? Do you have empirical evidence? It's going to, it's going to show me different than what my staff or the attorney has. And generally they don't.
Looks like we have one more question, um, that we can get to really quickly. What can be done to reverse a decision that has been made by the commission as a non-professional? I found this to be very informative.
Well, we're only making a decision to positively recommend or negatively recommend the, the decision to the town council. So the town council, the town council can, um, at that point, uh, not go with that recommendation and go with something else.
Some localities actually have where you can rescind your vote based if it was a mistake. You said something, uh, you know, um, you didn't mean to say, uh, you meant to vote yes and you voted no. So there's some localities in, and I know in this state that have that option and you can meet again, uh, recall the vote and vote to, and usually that's based on someone made an error in judgment. You know, oftentimes we're, we're confused and we're saying we, you know, do you recommend approval? We say no or yes, and somebody makes a mistake. But other than that, Roxanne's right. The elected board, council, town board, whatever the case is, um, it, it, they can go, well, hey, the planning commission recommended approval, but this is not suitable for our community based on the totality of the information we have and we're going to recommend against it. My conscience is clear because as Danny mentioned many times, we're there to just make decisions based on land use and what's presented to us during the meeting. And that's it.
Good questions.
Awesome. Yeah.
Very good questions from everybody.
And definitely you can share my information. I think that'd be great. I'm happy to talk to anybody anytime.
Yeah, and as mentioned earlier, um, sorry Joe, go ahead.
Just to say though, I want to point out there's some great resources, uh, for citizen planner training from other states and other organizations that were put in the chat, if anybody didn't see that.
One last comment, Joe. I just wanted to say that, uh, uh, some gray research, gray, gray research on the web found some information, the state of Michigan Economic Development and the Center Council of Government um, in Pennsylvania helpful in talking about commissioners, the do's and don'ts and, and a couple of good nuggets of information. So just wanted to make it clear that, the disclosure that, uh, there's some helpful sites out there and thanks.
As mentioned earlier, this webinar is being recorded and it will be posted on the Mid-Atlantic Planning Collaboration YouTube page. Um, all of our registrants will receive a follow-up email with a recap of this presentation as well as the link to the video along with the presenter's contact information if you have any further questions for them. Again, we thank you, all of you, to our, um, presenters today for joining. Again, we thank you, all of you, to our, um, presenters today for joining us. This was great. Um, I'm sure it was very helpful, useful information. Uh, thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Thank you, the panel.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.